Okay, good morning, and I'll call the order there November 7th, 2022, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance, and I don't see Pastor Josh here this morning, and after that we'll have a moment of silence. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
United States of America, and to remember which stands to our nation under God, indivisible,
Okay, our next order of business is public hearings, but we do not have those today. And then our next order of business is our public comment session. I do have one person signed up to speak. If you would, just limit your comments to three minutes, and Amy will let you know when your three minutes is up. So our first person signed up to speak is Dale Glantz. Welcome this morning, Dale. Just pull the mic down so we can hear you and speak. There you go.
I have a comment on schools. I've had a problem ever since the flood with their neighboring school, and I thought all Haywood County schools belonged to Haywood County. There was a game canceled at Tuscola Field overnight, and quite a few dollars spent in Buncombe County to Irwin. This is ridiculous. I cannot find out who authorizes the school to pay this. We have a lot of kids going hungry that money could have been spent in Haywood County at school. But these fields belong to each other. This is a bunch of hogwash, paying money to Buncombe County because somebody's feelings got hurt. I've come to the school board, I've come to you guys, and I still so far haven't got any answers. Who allows this money after I imagine the commissioners give it to the school system? How they can freely go spend this money? Something's wrong with the system. I have more to say than I know we're getting through. But I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate somebody if I could leave my name or even have it, could tell me this. We hope we don't have any more floods. But this is worse than a bunch of kindergartens, this situation that happened in this county. And this county is way too good to be let little stuff like that happen. And I had another comment, but my three minutes is up.
You still got some time. Okay, thank you, Dale. Appreciate you coming this morning. Would anyone else like to comment to the board? Make a comment. Okay, I'll close the public comment session, and we'll move to constituent concerns. Let's see, Bryant, do you have a comment on that, the school?
Work with Dr. Putnam and see if we can find out.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other public constituent concerns?
Just a comment, yes, working. I was privileged to represent Haywood County for the United States Forest Service Capitol Christmas Tree Ceremony up next to the parkway. First time probably in the history of Haywood County where the Haywood County grew the national Christmas tree for the U.S. Capitol. So I was privileged to stand in as a representative for Haywood County, and Bryant was invited, and two of us went up and witnessed all that. So it's an honor for that to be taken from our county. You know, trees are renewable resource, forestry is a big thing, and Dave Casey, our county forester, was there, and he was beaming with pride that they picked the tree from Haywood County. So it will be illuminated on the west lawn of the U.S. Capitol on November 29th, and I think there's an open invitation probably for somebody from Haywood County government to represent us there if you want to go up. But at any rate, it was an honor to stand in for that ceremony. So, and I also had a couple of other constituent concerns that I got with the folks and looking, seeking for an answer, so.
I didn't have any.
Okay, then our next order of business is agency, administrative agency reports and presentations, and the only one that we have is the 2020 9/11 Communications Tower Project Phase 1 update, and our chief deputy Jeff Haynes and MCA Mobile Communications America project manager Will Roberts and sales manager Jay Clegg and engineer Todd Robinson's here this morning to present that. Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to take just a few moments to sort of lay the groundwork, and then obviously an overview from the three gentlemen that we have here this morning that have been working on this ongoing project, Phase 1 of the tower project, and what is that? That is an enhancement of our communication system for public safety within Haywood County. It's been an ongoing project, and it has, in essence, in layman's terms, to look at this basically as to where we currently are on an analog system, which is a reliable system, but it's a one-tower system that we utilize. We have the capabilities of being digital as well, too, but not fully capable of doing that at this point. We're working on a site, actually a five-site system. It's called a simulcast system that basically works very similar to a cell tower system, where whatever the tower is you're closest to is the one that you hit, and it's transmitted on when our first responders, our fire EMS and law enforcement are out in the field responding to calls, and our 911 center is actually putting calls out. This eventually will move into Phase 2, which will add a sixth and final site that will tie that in. Currently, the five sites that will come online need to be completed, and with that, there's one specific site that has to be updated and brought into, I won't say in compliance, but be able to be compatible with the other five sites before we can move forward. That's been an ongoing process during this project as well, too, which has been headed up by Will Roberts and has helped with the project, and Jay Clegg is here as well, too. Our two of the representatives, and we also have Todd here as well, too, for any technical questions. In layman's terms, we need to finalize this fifth site to tie this system into place so that we can initiate the simulcast system, which will obviously become more efficient for our first responders. So that's the one last piece for Phase 1 before we move to Phase 2. With that said, I'm going to refer back to these three gentlemen behind me for a quick update on the timeframe for finishing that, and any technical questions that they are here to stand for if you have those. So with that said.
Good morning, I'm Will Roberts, project manager. So it is going to take, I would say, six to eight months to get this new equipment to finish this site. It's frequency-specific, it can't be built until that part is nailed down, which we are already in the process of doing. So six to eight weeks, we'll have the equipment and be able to climb the tower again and get that path in to complete that system. So that's the timeline that we're looking at, six to eight weeks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I will say this has been a great collaboration with both these organizations as well, too. They're just making it better for first responders here in the county and for the citizens, but it's been a long process, unfortunately, a costly one and timely one as well, too. So hopefully this will be the final piece of this Phase 1, and then move it on to Phase 2. With that said, are there any questions?
Okay, that's good that we're going to have a better communication system, this is very important.
It has been, and I have heard more terms that I couldn't define what they are and what they mean, so I'll defer to these people back here, but it has been a process, and at the end of the day, we need to have an end result that better serves our first responders who better serve our citizens. So thank you.
When did this process start, I guess I could ask you, do you think?
Approximately two years ago.
Okay, so it's a long process.
So, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's been the biggest question in this project in regards to why it's taking so long. And just to kind of give you an idea, probably the year that it took to get everything suitable to actually climb the towers and to do the lines and antenna work, because what happens, especially with Viper, it's a process where you have to do a structural analysis that has to be approved, and then it's sent to the state construction office, West Carolina, and that's where it can take six to eight months for just the approval. So when it comes back from the state construction office, then they have the package in order to do the lease agreements and to move forward. But that's been the majority of the time. We've had the system staged in Asheville, we've had work done to it, and climb towers and lines and antennas, but it was a long process, and actually having what they call the notice to proceed, and we were unable to do any of that until it went through the proper channels with the state, which unfortunately just takes a long time. And I've been working with Viper and working with the team there, and nobody can really slow that process down. I mean, speed it up, sorry, they're good at slowing it down. They can't speed it up. And so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, the length of time doesn't really have anything to do with equipment delays or work delays or not understanding what we're doing as professionals, it's just a series of hoops that all of this has to go through for approval, and it is a lengthy process. So I hope that answers a little bit as to why this project has been spread out for so long.
How we patrol you some of this?
Yes, sir, that's who we work with, so the Viper. And so it used to be a process of a handshake, and yeah, you can do this, it's no problem, but they, over the last year and a half, two years, since they made a change in who takes care of the notice to proceed, they have an engineering team, ETS, and their process, it's good on the front end, but the state construction office has to do site visits, they have to approve everything, and that's a very lengthy process with the state, so.
A big state.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, our next order of business is discussion adjustment to the agenda, and I have two items. One item will be, I need to entertain a motion that we add a request of approval to award the bid for the emergency medical ambulances to southeastern specialty vehicles in the amount of $1,309,172, which is four ambulances at $306,293 each, each outfitted with $21,000 in optional equipment, which will be presented by emergency services director Travis Donaldson. So can I have a motion that we add that to the agenda?
We add that to the regular agenda?
The regular agenda.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
So is item 12?
Yes. Yeah, no, item 12's good. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. Okay, and then the second item is I need to add, we need to add a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, we go into closed session per, when we get to closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143, 381.11A5, with this regarding property acquisition. So I'll entertain that motion. Oh, it's on it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so we're good to go, right? Okay. Okay, our next order of business is our consent agenda, and we have six items. Do we have any questions on those six items?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion at all? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next order of business is a regular agenda, and the first item is to request approval of a budget amendment for public schools' capital outlay, $65,000 to appropriate fund balance reserved to the schools', public schools' capital fund for the purpose of grading for the Tuscola farm. And we have our Haywood County School Superintendent Dr. Trevor Putnam. Welcome, Dr. Putnam. This is the first time you're appearing in your row, so, well, congratulations to that.
Thank you. I'll try to follow my mother's advice. Once I got the position, she said, "Congratulations, now don't screw it up." So I'll try to follow her advice.
I can hear her saying that, too.
We had a Tuscola farm project get underway at the initiation of one of our teachers, and it's a great project. If you remember, some years back, we purchased a piece of property at or near to the drive going up to Tuscola High School, and that property, we have found use of the property by creating a farm there. The teacher worked with several entities to try and obtain the funds to create a farm there, and was able to do so, number one, through all of you, through the commission. There was $50,000 awarded from all of you commissioners, so thank you for that. There was $25,000 provided from Farm Bureau, and then there's an additional $220,000 from WNC Communities, who represents the Dogwood Health Trust grant. So it would seem like there are sufficient funds, however, there is not. So the $220,000 from WNC Communities was given to us with the earmark that it would be used for the actual structure or actual farm, barn, structure on the property. And so we have put out, per state bidding laws, a request for proposal to do grading. That amount come in at $137,000. And our board has selected that apparent low bidder, which was WNC Paving, for that amount. So if we could access the $50,000 provided from the commissioners, $25,000 from Farm Bureau, and pair that with $65,000, which is our request today from state sales tax, we would then have sufficient funds to do the landscaping, leaving the $220,000 from WNC Communities for the structure. I'm not real sure the $220,000 will be sufficient for completion of the barn, however, we do have lottery funds should we need to come back and ask for lottery funds. That is an extension or a portion of the classroom for our horticulture class. So the ask today is $65,000 from state sales tax. It's money sitting in capital reserve for projects just like this, and that is the request from Haywood County Schools. Our board did make the motion and approve on October 10th, I believe it was, for me to come and ask for those funds.
Questions for Trevor? So your school, your board's approved that?
Yes, sir.
I think this is an important asset to Tuscola and to all high schools because their farming, if we can get more young people interested in farming, the better it'll be. So we need more farmers, so I definitely see the need for that.
Programs and think that they really enlighten children, or some kids that would never have that opportunity to understand how food is grown and how we grow, all sorts of things. So I think it's very valuable.
Just a continuing process that was started some time ago, and your board is just another step toward that goal.
Yes, sir. And as I said, you know, I may be back on a subsequent occasion because I don't know if $220,000 will be enough for the structure, concrete slab, electrical, metal structure. The intent is to do it really nice. WNC Communities, the money they afforded us, actually requires us to work with seven other counties that surround us, and actually bring them in and let them visit and experience the farm that is to be at Tuscola. So we want to do that well, we want to have restrooms at that location because it's a good distance back up to the school. We want to have sufficient space for livestock and make sure we can care for the animals properly. So I'm a little suspect of $220,000 being enough to complete this project on the structure side. But this, the $65,000 would assure that we get it cleared and graded and a pad graded in to begin the structure, or at least design work for the structure.
I do have one concern, you know, the Pisgah Farm has had some real impacts, and I realize that this light item is just for Tuscola, and certainly we want to move forward on that, but I know that the Pisgah Farm is also going to be in question, if it's not already, very soon.
They've come and spoken to our building and grounds. I did ask, reach out to WNC Communities to see if there might be funds available for them, and there cannot be. So the way WNC Communities views that is this farm would be available to Pisgah as well as Swain and Henderson and other areas to go and utilize the working farm. That's how it operates. Pisgah really was seeking authorization to fundraise, and they've begun that process, and they recently received a $15,000 go outdoors grant, so that's money toward that. Most of these funds were via fundraising as well on the Tuscola side of things, so we will certainly help them to that end, but a great point, Ms. Best, their farm is in need as well.
I think they were impacted by Tropical Storm Fred pretty significantly, weren't they?
It actually impacted the fencing around it, and that was restored, is one of the most readily restored things that we had of all the projects, and was funded by FEMA.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, we approve item one of the regular agenda. If there are any more questions?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Trevor works just fine, thank you.
Dr. Trevor? Okay, then item two of the regular agenda is to request approval of North Canton Fire Department to enter to a financing contract to purchase a custom brush truck. The truck is a new custom brush truck with a four-by-four Ford chassis, and the truck will cost an estimated $359,000, and three banks have been solicited for financing proposal with payment terms of 10 years. We have our North Carolina Fire Chief Steve Kelly here this morning. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, good morning. What we're going through is, I guess, the process of replacing a truck. The truck we're actually going to replace is a 1998 version of truck, and we are going through the process of that. We actually had, went to three different companies to look for that, and just due to supply and demand, two of them basically didn't even come back with a build, so we were actually looking at going with CW Williams, who we have actually purchased three trucks in the past from. And as you can see on, in your documentation for the banks, most of those are kind of generalized statements because the build time for a truck, once we sign, is 554 days out at minimum. So just because of the interest rate varying so much, they just kind of give us a random guess at what that final cost would be. But like I said, as you've seen, we're just following the process, we've actually, our board has approved it and everything, so we just have to go through you guys to get the final approval so we can go forward.
Any questions on that? Chief Kelly, if you could, just for our edification and for the public's edification?
Yes, sir.
Just explain, you know, because some people might say, "Well, why does the fire department need a brush truck?" So if you could, you could explain why we need that.
So for this, it'll be specifically a smaller truck that we can get to places that is not like for a typical large truck, and this one will actually be capable of being a supply engine also, so it'll meet the standard for a rated engine for the Department of Insurance. So in case one of our other trucks that is one of our rated engines goes down, then we'll still meet our standard, but the brush truck itself would be small enough that we can get in as we've all driven around in Haywood County, there's some really tight places, and there's some of these places that you just can't get to with a larger truck, so that's why we're going with that smaller brush truck slash engine.
And of course, I've seen how the fire departments have cooperated with each other. I've been involved in a burn, and it's amazing to me how everybody kind of works together. So I assume that this truck's not, it won't just help North Canton?
No, it'll be for any of our surrounding mutual aid. We have a county mutual aid, plus we also, since where we're located, we actually go into Buncombe County a lot, too. So we actually have automatic mutual aid with like Inca County and Lester and North Harmony.
You've been fortunate so far this month that you haven't had to use it.
Yes, sir, so far, we're hoping for some rain.
No, I better knock the wood on that one.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chief Kelly, how many gallons of water does that truck carry?
It carries 400.
And what will happen to the truck you're replacing?
We will, whenever it comes in, we will sell it, we'll put it on for bid on a government site, and whatever the proceeds from that, we're going to apply to the loan, so it'll help offset that cost.
Well, I know in my work, we have to get up into the mountains, and because access is, you know, the closer we can drive, the less we have to walk.
Yes, sir.
But, so I know, our vehicles, we try to have them, we love Jeep Cherokees because they're small, they don't make them anymore, but we have some old ones, but they're small and they get in there, so I understand how, you know, and we do have small roads, I mean, they were mostly logging roads, and, you know, they weren't built for, you know, regular cars.
Right, and the good part of this one will be is it's small enough and would be a rated engine that we would be operating legally to go fight a structure fire if we had to off of it because it's capable of that.
Okay, yeah, some people's driveways aren't real easy to get up.
Yeah, but people don't take that into consideration.
Yeah, a lot of your old subdivision roads weren't built to the standards that we have today on width and everything, so I know that that's an issue, too. Okay, so.
Well, I appreciate you guys, the work that you volunteers do and volunteer fire departments. I had an opportunity to speak with one of your board members, and it sounds like everybody's on board, and the job you're doing is fabulous, and, you know, going to state meetings, I see where the amount of training that a volunteer fire department person, a volunteer fireman has to do per year in the state of North Carolina will be certified. It's phenomenal that these volunteers will get up at 2:00 in the morning and go try to save somebody, save somebody's home, respond to accidents, and my hat's off to the volunteer fire departments all across the county, we need you guys, and I'm certainly in support of the equipment that you need, so thank you for coming. And I'm certainly in support of, of the equipment that you need. So thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
We, we didn't vote, did we? I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two.
I make a motion. We approve the request for the North Canton Fire Department.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, our next order, our next item is the request approval of a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. We have our Director of Veterans Services, Stephen Ioreid here this morning. And Stephen, I just want to let you know that we got a, I got an email or the county manager got an email from a Mr. Hayduk thanking you, Hayduk, I guess, thanking you for your, for helping him with his, with his needs. And I, and I want to personally thank you for how you've helped my dad and my mom to get the, the veterans benefits that they need because as, as, when I read this email, he was talking about how you're trying to navigate the federal government and the benefits. They're there, but to try to figure out what's there and how to get to them is, it's a maze, you know? And you really help people negotiate through that. And I want to thank you personally and for me and my mom. And I want you to, and I thank Mr. Hayduk for recognizing that, that you're providing a great service to our veterans. And I want to thank you.
Thank you. It is a big honor to be able to, to do what I do, you know? I, I wear this hat because I am a combat veteran and I love being a combat veteran because I can help other combat veterans, you know, with, with my knowledge and the position I'm in. So I, I do appreciate that. And I am one of 5,383 other veterans in this county. The VA takes care of us pretty well, but it is like finding a needle in a haystack, you know, getting started on that. You know, the money is there, the help is there from the VA. Last year they spent $75 million on us here in Haywood County, us veterans. That's a tremendous amount of money that they give us. Some of it's in compensation and pension. Other, other parts of that money is in, in healthcare that's provided in different ways, you know, in, in home healthcare and whatnot. So yeah, they, they give us quite a bit, 75 million. So.
They have a very good VA hospital.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll say in Asheville, it's great. Yeah.
Top notch VA healthcare we have here in the region, you know? The Asheville has satellites called C-Box. They're community-based outpatient clinics. There's closest one here is in Franklin. So we'd love to have more of those someday. Hopefully we get some as, as population increases or whatever. But great healthcare for us. And, and being one of those veterans, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and, and read this resolution for Operation Green Light. So I'll proceed with that if you. Whereas the residents of Haywood County have a great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Haywood County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil services, and functioning as the county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Haywood County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as an Operation Green Light for Veterans County. Haywood County hereby declares the week of Veterans Day, November 7th, 2022, through November 13th, 2022, as a time to salute and honor the services and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance, observance of Operation Green Light, Haywood County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of you, those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence adopted this seventh day of November, 2022. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone have any comments?
Let, let, let's confirm that date. Was the green light supposed to be on at your house?
It is the week of Veterans Day, November 7th, 2022, through November 13th.
So you, you keep it on the whole time?
Yes.
Okay.
That's from today till next week, I mean, 13th, so Sunday.
I know I'd spoken to the, the manager. Maybe you can tell us what we're planning on doing with the facilities. I know Tim's been working.
Tim and, and a few other folks at the facilities, I know Paul have purchased some LED lights. And so the courthouse will be lit up starting tonight. Fantastic, so.
And I want to thank you, Tommy, for bringing this to our attention. I think Tommy had, had seen it somewhere.
Yeah, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that was an initiative that came from our, our group. And we wanted to recognize, and it's a national, it's a national movement. We're, we're trying to heighten awareness to our, our citizens, the veterans, and the sacrifices they've made to give us freedom. And, and I'm honored to, to see this resolution here before us today. And I certainly would, would entertain to make the motion that we adopt this if, when it comes to that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just, just on a side note, the green, I asked the county manager, I wonder why they decided green? He said, I guess it was in honor of the Army. So.
That's right. Appreciate that.
We, we appreciate all, all the armed services. We certainly do.
Got to do red next time for the Marine Corps, right?
Yeah. That's right.
All right. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate your service and everyone's service.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is to request approval of option one and exhibit B of an easement request from AT&amp;T to place a fiber optic cabinet in front of the public, public parking garage located at 151 Branner Avenue, Waynesville. An approval for county manager to execute all easement documentation pending county attorney review. And we have our Assistant County Manager, Chris Boyd, here this morning to speak to that. Hey, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is along the same request that you folks approved for the Canton Library Facility. AT&amp;T is looking to expand their internet services. They're looking for easements around the, the county in lots of places. There may be more to come even after this. This 10 by 10 area is located on the northwest corner of the parking deck between Branner Avenue and the parking deck itself in the grassed area. I think we included the, the sketch drawing for you. Upon approval, this will be surveyed by AT&amp;T and we will execute the documents based on an exact survey. Northwest, this end, if you're looking at it.
Yeah, I can't get it. I'm locked out of my.
From this direction.
I'm locked out of my.
That, it, so is the whole cabinet going to be a 10 by 10 or just a location?
The, the location is 10 by 10, but it's closed. It's probably an eight by eight. It'll be set on a concrete slab.
It won't be fenced in? It'll just be covered with metal?
Just be closed in. It'll look exactly like one of the metal transformer electric cabinets you see. Will be locked. There's a, a lot of utilities in this area already. So be placing it along with the underground utilities that are already there.
And, and it's just one foot off of the, off the parking garage?
To get it there.
Okay. But at least it's set off the sidewalk. Okay.
It is. It's on the corner of the Waynesville parking area and the parking deck. And they're also going to pay us the $5,000 for it, just like they did the, the Canton Library as well.
A $5,000 one-time payment?
One-time payment.
Do you know exactly what kind of equipment will be in that building, Chris?
It's internet. It's all internet equipment. It'll.
It's a switch and just a switching station?
Switch type gear and maybe some type of servers. I'm not sure. That, that would be a question. Maybe Joey could answer better than I.
It's not a radio site, like a remote transmission?
Specifically internet.
Just hardware. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I guess, you know, we want to have more and more broadband and internet availability. And this is our small part to, to help that.
Our small part to contribute to that.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Chris?
So I guess Frank's looked over the document. Everything's kosher with the legalities of it and everything. Broke another record.
I move to approve item number four on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, Chris. Okay, the next item is, item five is to request approval to award the bid to Bolton Construction in service of Western North Carolina Incorporated in the amount of $133,110 for the replacement of two rooftop HVAC units serving the booking and evidence sections of the Haywood County Law Enforcement Center and approval for the county manager to execute required documentation. We have our Facilities and Maintenance Director, Tim Sisk, here to speak to that this morning. Welcome, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Last year, about the same time, we identified these next two units in a continued effort to try to upgrade some of that rooftop equipment. And these two were identified. The unit that's overbooking is, is shot. Hoping it holds on until we can get this equipment coming. Bolton has not been able to offer a timeframe yet, so I want to try to engage this as soon as possible. We put these out for bid November the 12th, received two quotes back, as you can see in your bid tabulation. Got one verbal declination of, of service, but the two that came to the table were Haywood Heating and Bolton. And Bolton came in lower and they, they actually provide our service, annual service for that building as well.
The bid was put out, was that October 12th?
No, September the 12th is when we put.
September. Oh, I thought you said November and I thought.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
September the 12th is when we dropped this in for bids.
How many bids did you have?
Two.
Two. Hard to get bids nowadays.
It really is. Yeah, it sure is. Yeah, I think you had said one time to me, keep them cool and keep them clean. It's difficult. Yep.
Well, it's all about updating your facilities. I mean, you have to continue to do that.
Yeah, one of the interesting statements that, you know, Bryant and Chris and I were talking about, our, our newest facilities are now aged, you know, they're, they're aging out. A lot of this equipment. You'll see a, a good one on the next agenda. It's coming.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, the good thing is a lot of these buildings are either paid for or near paid for, so, but we've got to maintain them. Yeah. Okay, so go ahead.
I move to approve item number five of the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, item six is to request approval of budget amendment, facilities and maintenance, $33,110 to replace, I mean, to appropriate contingency funds for the increased expenses associated with the replacement of two law enforcement center HVAC units. And Christian, you're going to let us know about that.
Yes, this is related to what Tim just presented. Last year when they did the budget, 100,000 would have been enough to replace the, those two units. But now with the cost of everything going through the roof, we need an additional $33,110 to replace those two units. And we're going to take that from contingency funds if approved.
Any questions? I guess this is pretty straightforward. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item six.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Christian. Number, item number seven is to request approval of a resolution authorizing purchase of four 2023 Ram 4500 tradesman, regular chassis, cab, DRW, four-wheel-drive, DPL9L63 from, I'll see, Elderton, Elderton Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram fleet, per exception to competitive bidding requirements. Emergency Services Director Travis Donaldson. You can't say that fast. Welcome, Travis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item I've got before you this morning is for the purchase of four cabin chassis. These are just the, the truck and the, and the frame and the, and the wheels. This is not the ambulance box. This is just chassis that we're trying to go ahead and purchase for future years' use due to the extreme chassis shortage that, that the ambulance market and anybody trying to buy fleet vehicles right now is experiencing. So this is our effort to, to get ahead maybe next year or future years to be able to have chassis, to be able to supply vendors, to be able to build our ambulance boxes on. Or if we were remounting a, a box off of an older chassis, we've got a chassis to put it on. We're not waiting in line at the, at the dealership, waiting on a chassis to come in to do that. So that's our effort and trying to get ahead of this as I don't see it going away for a number of years still.
Questions for Travis on that?
What's the lead time on those, Travis? Do you have any idea?
When I spoke to Elderton, they were saying six months potentially on getting those in.
I know I was speaking about the brush truck earlier and that, it may be 18 months on that.
Nobody really knows because everybody is at the mercy of, of ultimately the manufacturer. So everybody's going off their best knowledge and best, best guess of when we'll see this stuff. But I was given six months possibly from the folks at Idlerton, Elderton, sorry.
So you think you're getting a little bit ahead of the curve by going ahead and making this move?
Yeah, we've at least got chassis, if we can get these and get these in, we've at least got the chassis part, which is what everybody right now is waiting on and, and sitting in line for.
What's, uh, what's the status on our current fleet? I mean, I know you got probably some, it's.
Yeah, well, early in their own consent agenda, we approved a budget amendment for another $50,000. I've already went through $50,000 already in this year. So trying to keep things running and on the road. So it's, it's going to be expensive for the next couple of years trying to keep stuff going until we can get stuff replaced. It's high mileage, staying on top of it the best we can. And, and trying to, trying to forecast problems so we can get a hold of them before, before they surface.
Well, I appreciate you staying on top of it. I know that's, that's your job and I, I know the citizens do. And I know that you're, you're staying on top of it and we appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So ultimately, the, the thought is that once we get these chassis, once we receive them, then we'll start sending them out for fiscal year '24. Is that correct?
These, if they come in on time, would potentially be for the trucks in fiscal year '24.
We can go ahead and get in line for outfitting for getting the, I guess, the boxes, the ambulance box and things put on it?
Correct. Cause usually with most manufacturers, as far as their manufacturing timeline, they start a clock basically at receipt of chassis for them. So if we can bump that receipt of chassis date up by shipping them our chassis that we've. So if we can bump that receipt of chassis date up by shipping them our chassis that we've gone on a lot, hopefully we're saving some time there.
Inside the box.
And this is something that the county manager has been discussing with us independently for a period of time. And at the end of the day, you want to make sure your citizens are safe and that you can provide an ambulance, and because of the backlog and the difficulty of getting these things, that's why we're trying to be proactive to purchase these items. So we don't run into a situation where we can't send an ambulance out here in a couple of years.
Yeah, again, back to what Jennifer just said, thinking outside of the box because the box solutions that we've been used to for the years past are no longer an option for us.
I move to approve item number eight, uh, seven, on the regular agenda.
Second.
Aye.
Then the next item is eight, is the approval of the budget amendment for $273,036 to appropriate fund balance for the purchase of four ambulance chassis from Alderton Dodge Finance Director. We have our finance director, Christian Owen, for that. Hey, Christian.
Hello. Yes, I'm just here to ask for the money from fund balance to purchase those four chassis for $273,036.
Okay, so when you say fund balance, but it's out of, we did have it budgeted from our vehicles or?
This is additional because this is to get ahead. This is for fiscal year '24, so we didn't have these funds budgeted.
All right, okay. Well, that's why we've got to get a healthy fund balance.
So in the future budget, will it be returned back to the fund balance? Will it be budgeted and then returned back?
No, the purchase of the chassis per this year for the FY '24 budget, we will probably just include funds for the box, as we're calling it. So you won't see anything revert back to fund balance. We would just hope to save the chassis cost when we bid out the FY '24.
Okay, I understand.
Now, entertain a motion. We approve item eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Got another one here. The next is to request approval of budget amendment, county purchases, repairs, maintenance fund. County, and this is for county projects, the EOC Tower Project Phase One, $25,634, to appropriate fund balance to cover increase in cost of completing Phase One.
Yes, this was what Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes spoke with you earlier. This is the amount we're short, basically, to complete that project, the Phase One. We need an additional $25,634.
Entertain a motion. We approve item nine.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. You're up again, Christian.
Yes.
Request approval of budget amendment, Sheriff's Department, $47,055 to appropriate fund balance reserved for the Sheriff's Office Drug Forfeiture Funds received in prior fiscal year. Funds will be used to purchase equipment that has expired or is inoperable.
Yes, this is as money they collected last fiscal year through the drug forfeiture program. They want to use those funds this year to replace some equipment, some plates and stuff that have just aged out. They have life, estimated life on them, and they have expired, so they want to replace those.
Questions for Christian on that? Yeah, entertain a motion. We approve item 10.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and then one more, Christian.
Last one.
Request approval of budget amendment, this is number 11, item 11. Request approval of budget amendment from the Home and Community Care Block Grant for $389,050 to appropriate fund balance for the expenses of Home and Community Care Block Grant for fiscal year 2023 that were not budgeted.
Yes, this is the Home and Community Block Care Funds that we received. The revenue portion was budgeted under HHSA, but we missed the expense side. What we do is we collect those funds, and a portion of those funds go out to mountain projects to help with some of their housing costs.
No questions? Passed through funds?
It's passed through primarily. We keep a small portion of it, but the majority is passed through funds.
Okay, and it really helps low-income families.
Yes, yes.
I move to approve item number 11.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to item 12, which is what we had added to our agenda. And this is for approval to award the bid for four emergency medical ambulances to Southeastern Specialty Vehicles in the amount of $1,000,000, 1.309127 million. Four ambulances at $306,293 each, and each are outfitted with $21,000 in optional equipment. Go ahead, Travis.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. This is a separate item I've got before you. We opened bids Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock. This was a rebid of the previous item that I brought to you a couple of months ago. Again, this is rebid for those. We had those open for four weeks. We had two vendors place bids, lowest bid being the 306293. And that'll be four trucks with $21,000. The $21,000 mentioned in there in optional equipment is the actual stretcher to go with that truck. That brings a total of $1,309,172,000. Projected delivery on these is 120 days after they receive the chassis. The items or the trucks that they bid are 2024 fleet Dodge chassis. Dodge will not open the fleet order bank for 2024 chassis until the fall of 2023. So these chassis won't be ordered until that point. And then hopefully, if all goes well, the manufacturer doesn't cancel the chassis, these will be on the floors at the winning bidder, the manufacturer, hopefully sometime in the spring of 2024, and then the 120 days start at that point.
Any questions on that?
And these are, this is from budgeted funds, and we are within budget on this item here that we budgeted.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you speak a little bit about what the $21,000 stretchers are? Didn't you say stretchers? Is that what you said?
Yeah, those are the stretchers, the cots that we place people on, we take into people's houses. We've got a fleet of those that go with each truck. What we've got is getting just as wore out as the trucks that they're loaded up in. So we're replacing them as we always have with each new ambulance that we bring in.
Are these the stretchers that when you connect them to the vehicle and automatically pulls them up?
Correct, that's that part of it, yes.
So you don't have, you know, ambulance personnel aren't picking people up there, actually?
Yeah, those are the ones that are saving all our back injuries and all those workers' comp claims that we were dealing with in the past. Fortunately, we've not had to since we've got those.
That's why they're more expensive. I didn't want the public to think we're paying for $21,000 cots.
Yeah, no, they're saving half a million dollar injuries, so.
Right.
How many, how many, how many is that? Four?
Total quantity is four.
Yeah, okay. I know if they were loading me, they'd definitely only use-
Easy now.
I'm a big guy.
Well, the stretcher just itself is pretty heavy, is it not?
Oh, it's true, yeah.
Yeah, power stretcher's about 120 pounds, so.
Oh, wow. Golly. Okay. Okay, so this is item 12, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve item 12.
So moved. Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, we don't have a budget amendment with this, do we, Christian? Oh, okay, okay, so we're just, okay, good. Thank you, Travis, and thank you all, you and Bryant, for trying to figure out how to keep us ahead of the curve there.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is appointments, and we only have one, is to request approval of a reappointment of Joshua, and I'm not, I guess it's Hoogerworth to the Maggie Valley Zoning Board as an ETJ member and appointment to the Maggie Valley Planning Board as an ETJ member. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced his name. I'm sure I did.
Can't believe you did that. That's an old-time Haywood County name, Hoogerworth.
Well, I do appreciate him applying because I know these, you know, it's hard to find folks sometimes, and the ETJs. So entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Our next order of business is closed session, and we do have a property acquisition, North Carolina General Statute 14338111A5. So entertain a motion. We go into that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in closed session when we go into the back chambers back there, so. Okay, we'll be in closed session when we go into the back chambers back there, so.
Okay, we've returned to open session. Does anyone have any further business for the board?
I just wanted to say, Kevin, we're sorry for your loss, your father passing away this past week.
I appreciate all the texts and emails and the calls and everything. I appreciate that. And appreciate the county bringing food. Thank you. All right, so I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.